I would like to call the City of Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for February 6, 2020, to order. Can I go at rule call members, please?
Will Kerns.
Here.
Daniel Larson.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Richard Peterson.
Here.
Jaheen Simba.
Here.
Vivian Boss.
President.
Melissa Antol and Janet Leo are absent tonight.
Thank you. The next order on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda? Can I get a second?
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, call for vote.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the minutes for January 16, 2019?
I move, motion, the order of the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections to the order of the minutes? Seeing none, call for vote.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Tonight, we have two cases before us. If there's... This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone signed to speak that doesn't pertain to these two cases? Okay, that would conclude the public forum. I'd like to welcome the members of the public and ask that you respect the statements made by city staff, the applicant, and my fellow planning commissioners during the proceedings. It is important that the public meeting be conducted in a dignified and respectful manner. Please do not clap, yell, boo, make commentary from the audience, or otherwise disrupt the proceedings. I now open up the public hearing for case number WZ-1907, an application filed by Artelain and Kim Hardy for approval of a zone change from residential one to a planned residential development with an outlined development plan located at 9800 West 38th Avenue. And before we begin, I would like anyone from the public who plans to testify or comment to please stand or raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter as you know it? Thank you, and ask for the staff report.
All right, good evening. My name is Scott Cutler. I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. Can we lower the lights above the projector, please? I'm presenting case number WZ-1907, which is a request for approval of a zone change from residential one to a planned residential development with an outlined development plan. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. Properties within the City of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, the Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear the case.
So noted.
This is an aerial view of the property. The property is outlined in red. This is from 2018. It's about 1.28 acres. It's currently vacant. It's a block east of the Kipling corridor. And the surrounding area is a mix of uses. There are duplexes to the east and to the north, single-family to the south and east, commercial to the west, and park to the southwest. This is a zoning map. So the site is zoned R1, as are the properties to the south. Properties to the north across 38th Avenue are zoned R2. And then we have the duplex development to the east zoned R2A. Commercial zoning is located along the Kipling corridor with some mixed use to the further north and west just off this map. Plan development process, the applicant is proposing to develop the site with 10 dwelling units with three duplexes and four single-family homes. Their request tonight is for a rezone from R1 to planned residential development. The outlined development plan accompanies the zone change request by establishing the zoning and development standards for this site specifically. The code allows for processing ODP's outline development plans and specific development plans concurrently or sequentially, and the applicant has chosen the sequential two-step option. I'll go through the ODP document and then talk about the criteria for review and staff findings. And we're in the first step, the outline development plan. I'll show a zoomed-in map in a second, but this is the outlined development plan which establishes the PRD planned residential development zoning. The ODP document is two sheets in this case. The first page has signature blocks, legal descriptions, and a description of the development. The second sheet shown here contains development standards and the proposed site layout, which I'll show in more detail in just a minute. So this table summarizes the development standards that are proposed on Sheet 2 of the ODP compared to the R1 zoning. For permitted uses, the applicant has proposed duplexes and single-family as primary uses. No accessory buildings or RV parking would be permitted in the development. For architecture, the city does not have design standards for duplexes and single-family homes. However, the applicant has proposed self-imposed standards, which include aggregated masonry requirement, varying elevation so all units are not identical, and alley-loaded garages. For the height, the proposed maximum height of 28 feet for the single-family homes and 25 to 30 feet for the duplexes is lower than the R1 maximum of 35 feet. For units, 10 units would be allowed in this development, four single-family homes, sorry, and three duplexes. This is more than the R1 zoning would allow, but is comparable with the density of the Iris Court development to the east and below the citywide 21 per acre maximum. The setbacks are shown on the screen. For R1, the front-facing public street setback is 30 feet. This development proposes 20-foot setback, but still would allow for front yards. And then side and perimeter setbacks, the proposed development is proposing 20-foot setbacks, whereas R1 would require 15. And then interior side setbacks, the single-family homes had seven-and-a-half-foot setbacks proposed versus 15 for R1. So there are some larger setbacks proposed for this development and also some smaller ones. And then landscaping, this city code requires each lot to be 25% landscaped, including 100% of the front yard, not counting driveways or sidewalks. The ODP also has this requirement, but an additional 11% of the site is dedicated as an unbuildable tract for open space and drainage. Lastly, parking. Each unit is required in this development to have a two-car garage, and all but three units will also have a driveway large enough to fit two more cars. Additionally, four onsite spaces are included, plus two on-street parking spaces on Johnson Street, for a total of 40 parking spaces for the site, or four per unit. This is the site plan from Page 2 of the ODP with some annotations. The duplexes are going to be located along 38th Avenue with front yards. An alley will bisect the site and access the single-family home garages. There's also additional parking located on the west side, but as stated earlier, each unit will have a two-car garage, and most will also have driveways large enough for two vehicles. The open space and drainage tract is located along the southern property line and near the additional parking. On-street parking will be created on Johnson Street with new curb, gutter, and sidewalk added to improve this frontage. The site was subject to a different zone change application by a different owner approximately two years ago, which had six more units and all duplexes. This site plan is more consistent with the surrounding area and has evolved based on feedback from the previous neighborhood meetings. This is a view of the open space tract, which does not include the guest parking spaces that takes up approximately 11% of the site. The primary reason for this tract is to allow the drainage way to flow unobstructed without being an individual property owner's responsibility to maintain. The proposed underground detention pond would also be located in this area under and near the parking. This tract would also act as an unbuildable landscaped buffer between the site and the neighborhood to the south. This is a view of the open space tract plus unbuildable areas that are in the setbacks for the various buildings. The light green you see on the screen will act as unbuildable open space for each property. Please note that the open space will actually be even larger, since most buildings won't be able to take up all of the white space on each lot. Each lot is required to be at least 25% landscaped, which limits the overall building footprint. For example, the yard for the house in the southeast corner will actually be much larger due to that limitation. Only open space within the required setbacks is shown. These are schematics of how the proposed buildings would sit on the site. As mentioned earlier, the houses would not take up the whole white space on the diagram shown on the previous slide. As you can see, each duplex will have a landscaped front yard between the building and the 38th Avenue sidewalk. And the single-family homes will have backyards of varying sizes in addition to the landscaped tract to the south. This diagram shows the uses proposed by the ODP in relation to the surrounding uses. You can see that it is adjacent to multiple duplex lots already to the east and to the north. The single-family portion of the site borders the single-family to the south, although it will be on smaller lots. Discovery Park is located to the southwest, and the Kipling corridor is more commercial in nature, Apple Ridge Cafe, gas stations, Starbucks and Sprouts. And then just off this map to the west are also two redevelopment sites. So four duplexes will be located next to the dentist office on 38th Avenue, and a Starbucks... Building next to the Starbucks will be a new multi-tenant commercial building on a previously vacant lot. So this is just to give everyone some context of the surrounding area. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which include consistency with the comprehensive plan. Full analysis for criteria for consideration of the zone change was provided in the staff report for Planning Commission, but this image is an excerpt from the comprehensive plan, which provides guidance in terms of land use. The property is shown and located in the yellow neighborhood area. You can see that it is also within a block of Kipling corridor, which is a primary commercial corridor with mixed-use commercial and a community commercial center. The neighborhood designation, which the property is in, encourages improvement of underutilized properties. The proposed zone change is consistent with that neighborhood designation and sports the city's stated goals of increasing options for homeownership and attracting a range of household types. Large portions of the city designated as neighborhood contain duplexes, and this application is found to be in full compliance with the comprehensive plan and the intent of the neighborhood section. It acts as a transition from the higher intensity and density Kipling corridor to the duplexes to the east and single-family to the south. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on October 3, 2019 in City Hall. 18 people attended the meeting, and notes from that meeting were provided in the staff report. We also sent the application on a four referral to all outside agencies, including fire, water, sanitation, Excel, Comcast, and so on, as well as completed an internal review with the Planning Division and Engineering Division. We did not have any concerns or objections from any of the outside agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days. Letters were sent to property owners within a 300-foot radius, and comments were also... The public could also comment on the new Wheat Ridge Speaks website. We received three comments on Wheat Ridge Speaks, all in support of the project, and those comments were available and are still in the public record for the planning commissioners to review. As far as findings go, staff believes the zone change request meets the criteria for a zone change. It allows for a compatible and transitional land use. It complies with the comprehensive plan, and it provides an opportunity for reinvestment. The area has long included a mix of housing types, and this project will add to the diversity of housing in the area. So ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request. Planning Commission will recommend a decision to City Council, who will also review the ODP. If City Council approves the ODP, the zone change is approved, and the applicant could move forward with a specific development plan and plot. That concludes my presentation, and the applicant will also make a brief presentation. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's hear from Commissioner Peterson. Any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Simba. Commissioner Larson.
I'm going to hold my questions for now.
Thanks.
Commissioner Boss.
I had a couple of questions. You mentioned on the notice, it sounded like a second notice, 300 feet. Was that what?
Correct. So for any zone change application, first, there's a neighborhood meeting. That's a 600-foot notification. So anyone within a 600-foot radius of the property will be notified. And then for each hearing, for Planning Commission, 300-foot radius for the mailings, and then signs are also posted on the property.
Why not the 600 feet on the second notice?
That's prescribed by our code. So the city code dictates those two dimensions.
Is there a reasoning behind the two difference on notices?
You know, the distances of public notification is something that's been brought up to council, is something to study, but it's something we've done consistently for decades now based on that code requirement.
Okay, I'll look into that. Let's see, the two addresses that you... that were on Page 8 that were listed, I think you went over it quickly. One was Starbucks, and what was the other one that you referred to that are in this area of change of character in the area? What was the other address?
The other project is located next to the dentist office, just to the west of the dentist office. I believe it's 10191 West 38th Avenue.
And I believe we heard that case, and that is a housing...
It is. So that property has different zoning, but it was approved for eight duplexes, so it's actually significantly denser than what is proposed this evening.
And that's within a half-mile of this one we're hearing tonight?
Like, less than 1,000 feet.
Right, okay.
Like, two blocks.
Thank you. Page 5. Separate from this project, the city has budgeted for improvements to 38th and Kipling intersection in 2020. Do we know what those improvements are roughly, we're speaking about?
I'll let Jordan handle that question.
Sure. So that project's being designed right now. We're adding a second left turn lane to both eastbound and westbound 38th Avenue at Kipling. We're thinking that project will probably go to construction later this summer, so that should be complete by the end of this year. And that will help alleviate a lot of the traffic concerns around this area. Right now, there's some turning queues that are blocking traffic and causing delays, and we think this project will really help that out.
And that's the only construction you're talking about, is a second turn left lane?
Correct. There are some minor improvements. We're replacing an inlet and upgrading some signals there, but really, the main thrust of the project is to add these turn lanes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Sheriff Boss? Any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Kerns?
Not yet. I'll hold until after the applicant.
I have a couple of questions. If you could pull up probably the preliminary site plan number two?
Sure. And I apologize for turning off the projector. I was trying to load the applicant's presentation and not show everyone everything. This one? Does that work?
Yeah, I think that'll work.
Okay.
So, one question is, and maybe this is for Mr. Jeffries, can the drive coming off of 38th, is there any thought if that could be a right-in, right-out?
So, we typically don't like to limit the movements unless there's a compelling reason to. And, you know, the site-generated traffic is not enough to cause delays for people leaving the site. And the traffic along 38th, it gets about 12,000 cars a day, which sounds like a lot, but it's really not a lot of volume, not enough to warrant a right-in, right-out. There's several other drives along 38th that are also full movement. The only reason I could see for possibly doing that is there are some grade challenges. That road is going to slope down quite a bit, so if there are any site-distance issues or anything, we may consider that during the SDP phase. But at this point, you know, we haven't seen a detailed design yet, so there's really no reason to limit it at this point. But if we do see that concern, we will definitely, you know, require that to be a right-in, right-out.
And then this is a... I don't know who should answer this, but this is a fairly small site. Is the 38th drive necessary versus a cul-de-sac or an emergency access turnaround, such as the Merkwood Estates project that was on the northeast corner of 32nd and Route? If you recall that project, that was kind of a dead end. I'm trying... Because that one was probably a lot longer, probably two to three times longer than this project, but that one was a dead end and had an emergency turnaround. Why is this one coming out on a 38th when it has safe access off of the Johnson Street?
It's helpful to distribute the traffic, and with the entrance, the access point directly onto 38th, we're directing some of that traffic directly to the roadway that's intended to carry high volumes. If we were to limit the access to Johnson Street, you'd see a little more traffic on Johnson Street, which is a local street. And, you know, it's nice to have the two points so we can kind of distribute that traffic.
But what's the... What was the rough traffic count? Was there... I don't know, was there a traffic report even done on this? It's so small, or you just have some estimates?
We did look at the trip generation just on our own. We didn't require it of the applicant because we knew it wasn't going to meet the threshold for the traffic report. But I think it says in the report, it's maybe 10 or 11 trips, 12 trips in the PM peak hour, which is pretty low, but...
And so would that be roughly five per each drive, or is that... Could that be assumed that it's 10 per one drive, or five for each drive? How is that?
It's hard to say. It'll certainly be distributed. We haven't looked exactly whether that's 20% to Johnson and 80% to 38th, or how that actually breaks down. But, you know, there's existing local traffic on Johnson already, so we've just tried to... I think it's a good idea to distribute that traffic away from Johnson onto 38th and just have the option to go any other direction.
A couple more things I might add. So it's as much a site design issue as it is a traffic issue. We've seen sort of draft iterations of what it would look like to have a single point of access, and it has significant impacts on the ability to provide additional parking onsite when you have to reserve that area for a fire turnaround. And that was one of the comments that we've heard from the neighborhood on this property over the last couple of years. So that was certainly an interest. And also, a consideration of fire, just their preference is usually not to have to do a turnaround. So that's an option in the code, but not their first preference by any means.
Right, but the other Merkwood Estates, that was a very long road versus typically...
The Merkwood turnaround, I think staff's recommendation and fire's preference was to have a connection through and not a turnaround. So that ended up being a decision made by, I think, City Council in the 11th hour, but was never the preferred design by staff or fire.
But typically, fire trucks can... If they... They prefer that the length is, what, 500 feet? No longer than 500 feet with the hose?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. The next question I have is, I see there's a reference. I'm looking at this, what appears to be a private road. It says it's 25 feet wide, but it's labeled an alley. Alley's... Every alley I've seen, they typically do not have sidewalks that face the front of homes. How is the street considered an alley?
I'd say for one, it does access to garages, whereas the homes' front doors face 38th Avenue. So in a lot of ways, it's a hybrid design. This is pretty common on planned developments where an alleyway will also contain a sidewalk, because it's the only way to get pedestrian access to some residences. It's really a nomenclature thing, more than like it's classified as an alley versus a drive or anything like that. But it is first and foremost a service entrance for the duplexes. There are six duplexes with the garages facing that. And then on the south side, it is more like a private street where you've got a sidewalk, and then the front doors of the single-family homes facing that direction.
Okay. And the next question I have is on lot DUP number five. Yes, right there. So on that southeast corner, so what is this... What is the dash line? I can see there's a 20-foot setback on the north side there that goes east-west. Correct?
So the dash line shows the buildable area based on the setbacks. Obviously, in that corner, having a curved building is not feasible for a lot of reasons. And so often, like, you don't build to the setback. We wouldn't permit something like that. That would be reviewed at time of the SDP, just to make sure that there is visibility around that corner, and also, it's a design that makes sense for that site. So it may require the building to be pushed north, still meeting the front setback, but not going all the way down that dash line to the alleyway. And that would allow for, you know, increased visibility. But we're not reviewing specific building plans as part of the SDP or the ODP.
Right. So as it shows right now, the building setback goes to the edge of the road. And my concern is that... That's what it shows. Whether or not they could build it, that's not what the plan conveys. And I'm concerned about if it's an alley, which it sounds like technically the north side, the duplexes, it sounds like that side of the street is an alley, then that would require a 15-foot site triangle, which means that a portion of that lot, building setback, would have to be pushed to the north. So it would be out of the site triangle. And that's kind of why I was asking the questions about our access coming off of 38th. I'm trying to envision, you know, where's that building? How far south is it going to come? And any car that's coming off of 30th onto that drive proceeding south, and if there's a building in the way, we're going to have some problems.
The site triangle will have to be shown on the specific development plans when we get to that point to confirm there's no conflict.
Okay. And then the last question I have is, and this maybe is for the developer, but just from the city's standpoint, on the underground detention, who maintains... Those fill up with sediment. Who maintains, cleans those out?
So that's why it's in its own tract, which means it's not a single homeowner's responsibility. It's part of an HOA or some covenant for the community, and everyone pays into it. But they probably have more specifics about how that would work.
So there's going to be an HOA created?
The city... Yeah, the city will require an HOA. We'll require... This is now fast-forwarding at least two more. So this is the ODP. We'd get the SDP. We'd get a plat. We'd get a subdivision improvement agreement that would put the obligation of maintenance on the developer and any successors. That responsibility is passed on to the HOA. The city reviews HOA covenants, and prior to any issuance of a CO, we require a signed operations and maintenance manual and stormwater management agreement from any development that has a responsibility like this. So it wouldn't... It would not be unmaintained. We would also eventually retain an easement, should we have to come in as a city and maintain it in the instance that they wouldn't.
I have no further questions. Does any other commissioners have any more questions for staff?
I had one more. Scott, maybe I missed it, but that development quote-unquote "west of Starbucks" is going to be a what?
It's four duplexes.
Four duplexes?
Oh, and the one west of Starbucks. So that is, if you all know, whichever one here is probably familiar with that site, the Kipling Ridge Shopping Center, there's a vacant lot next to Starbucks, and it's going to be just another small commercial building, single-story, parking, few tenants.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, staff?
I question the need for the four spaces of additional parking. It seems like a little superfluous. Seems like that would be better served as just open space, and you could put those four spaces parking either in the alley or on the street. Is this additional parking because of certain city requirements, or why is this there?
So it's actually there because that came up as an issue in the neighborhood meeting, parking, making sure that the site is fairly self-contained. We know there's no street parking on 38th Avenue, so the only street parking available is those two spaces on Johnson, and then the rest of Johnson is unimproved. So it's allowing some additional guest parking. It'll be four spaces per unit, which is actually higher than most, like townhome developments in the city, but about on par with single-family homes. So it's trying to, one, listen to the neighborhood in terms of the parking, but also trying to self-contain the site a little bit, so there's not negative impacts on the surrounding area.
Will people be allowed to parallel park in the alley or not?
No. So that's also a fire access route. But there... Most units will contain... Every unit will have a two-car garage, and then most will have spaces for two vehicles in the driveway, and then the additional parking is just for guests or additional vehicles. So it's mostly about just neighborhood impacts.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, yes, go ahead.
Just to stay with parking for a second, stay with those four spaces. So you can park an additional car in there, so if it's a family that has three cars... can park an additional car in there, so if it's a family that has three cars, you can park one of them in there sort of permanently?
That would be up to the developer and the HOA, in terms of if that's guest parking or assigned to a specific unit.
And do, do city parking rules apply to private spaces?
For, for what type of parking?
I'll be very specific. I have a giant wrecker living next door to me, and I want to know if that wrecker could park, could it park in space number four?
Can, you mean can the public park in private parking?
Or like abandon vehicles?
It's private parking, right?
Private parking for the benefit of this property, just like you wouldn't go and park your car in a neighbor's driveway. But the intent in providing this parking, the zoning code, when a new single-family home or new duplex is built, requires four spaces per dwelling unit. That can be either all four spaces onsite, so two in a garage, two in a driveway, or it could be two onsite and two on-street in front of the home. So what we've heard time and again with this property, as Scott mentioned, is that parking is a concern, and that this site in particular should meet the city standard of four spaces per unit. And, and that's a large part of the reason why we balance the desire to see on-street parking on Johnson and the additional spaces in the site to the benefit of those users. The HOA covenants can create their own micro set of rules if they want to figure out who of those residents may use those four parking spaces.
And Commissioner Peterson-
Who, and for what? Who, who may use them and for what they may use them?
Yes, that, that would be something that'd be addressed by private covenants, not the city.
Correct. And just to add to your point, the city would be enforcing parking on Johnson Street, but then within the private development, it would be up to the HOA.
But that's settled internally?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, let's, let's hear from the applicant.
Let me pull up their presentation.
No, it's actually going through on timing, so you just have to press back, usually back and forth.
I'm Kim, and this is my husband, Ardalon Hardy. We own the 9800 West 38th Avenue property. We've lived in Wheat Ridge for many years, and we currently live at 10240 West 34th Place, just blocks from the 9800 38th property.
We've been resident of Wheat Ridge for a long time. Our kids went to Prospect Evermill School and graduated from Wheat Ridge High. I personally owned Country Cafe for many years and 32nd and Youngfield. Our son was a volunteer firefighter for Wheat Ridge Fire Department. We currently own and operate the ranch at West 40 in Lakewood.
And our plan is to build a neighborhood that we would like to relocate to at some point, that larger lot preferably, and to build a nice community for ourselves and others. Christine Simcox, our architect, is going to give you a little bit more overview.
Hi, I'm Christine Simcox. I apologize a lot of what I've said Scott's already said, so you guys get to just hear it too. My address, 11103 San, S-A-N, Juan, J-U-A-N, Range Road. That's Littleton, 80127. We had a neighborhood meeting, Scott mentioned, in early October of 2019 to discuss these preliminary plans, and after the meeting, we looked at the plan development and made some adjustments. Since that meeting, we've reduced the density of the property, the type of dwelling units have changed, and the height of the dwelling units along 38th Avenue has been reduced. The property is located on West 38th Avenue, east of Kipling. The property is 1.2729 acres in size and slopes down to the south and west corner of the property. This planned community will enhance an unused site and provide a variety of dwelling unit types. The development will promote pedestrian connectivity and interaction with existing commercial properties. We are proposing a development that will have four single-family houses on the south side of the property and three duplex buildings located on the north side of the property along West 38th Avenue. These 10 new dwelling units will be accessed from a new alley, which will be entered from 38th Avenue and from Johnson Street. Each dwelling unit will have a two-car garage, and I apologize, all lots that I'm repeating myself, or repeating information, all lots except lots one, five, and 10 will have a minimum of two additional parking spaces in their driveways. The property will have four onsite parking spaces in the southwest corner of the property, and Johnson Street will be widened to accommodate two additional parking spaces, and this will provide a total of 40 parking spaces for the community. This is a conceptual design site plan, and it shows, it's conceptual, but it shows the proposed dwelling units on the property. The four units at the south side of the property are single-family houses with two-car garages, covered front porches, and decks off the back. The duplex units will be located on the north side of the property along West 38th Avenue, and will each have two-car garages, covered front porches, and decks that face the alley. I will be showing some conceptual drawings in a few slides away. The landscape plan, we've also, it's, it's also conceptual, but we really wanted to show that we intend for this development to be well-detailed with well-thought-out landscaping as well as architecture. We would like to provide a buffer along that open, open space that buffers the duplexes from the, from 38th Avenue and the single-family homes from the development to the south of the property. These are conceptual designs of the single-family homes, front and back, and like I said, they're still conceptual, but we wanted to give you an idea of what we would like to put on this property. These homes are approximately 1,800 to 2,000 square feet in size. They'll be three-bedroom, three-bath units with a two-car garage. They will have a maximum height of 28 feet as defined by the City of Wheat Ridge. This is just a close-up of those houses. They'll have a variety of architectural styles, building materials, and roof lines. We want the buildings in this community to feel cohesive, but not look exactly the same, and adjacent structures will not have the same detailed elevations. All front elevations and sides facing the public right-ofways or open spaces will have a minimum requirement of 30% of masonry materials such as brick, brick veneer, synthetic stone, or stucco. Whoops, it went ahead for me. This is the, a conceptual design of the duplexes, conceptual drawings. The drawing on the bottom is the north side face, what you'd see if you were on 38th Avenue, and the image on the top is what you'd see from the alleyway, looking at those garages. These dwellings, the duplexes will be, have a strong front orientation towards 38th Avenue. They'll have strong front entry designs, covered patios or decks, and their elements will match the same architectural treatments as the single-family homes. Units on each end are two-story dwelling units with drive-under garages, and those end units will have a maximum height of 30 feet. Those end units are about 1,700 square feet of finished space, three bedrooms, three baths each. The four other, that's what those ones on the end. The four other duplex units are L-shaped and will be one story above a garage that drives, that's accessed from the alley as well. They have a maximum height of 25 feet. Those units are about 2,000 square feet in total finished space. We have about 500 on the ground level with the garage and about 1,500 above that. And they're also three bedrooms and three baths. With the single-family homes, the duplex units also will have a variety of architectural styles, building materials, and roof lines. The front elevations and sides facing the public right-ofways and open spaces will be finished with a minimum of 30% of masonry material, brick, brick veneer, synthetic stone, stucco, those materials again. I'm not sure I said this with the single-family homes, but adjacent buildings will not have the same detail, that's the same for duplexes and single-family, if I missed that. Whoops. We plan to create an attractive and well-detailed transitional community, designed to allow buffering and density transitions from the commercial center to the west, and duplexes to the north and east, to the lower du, uh, density, single-family houses to the south. And on behalf of, on Ardalon and Kim, I, I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Pearson?
Just had them answered.
Commissioner Simba?
I did have a question about the traffic. In the applicant letter, page 17 in our notes, the last paragraph, it says the, it is projected the project will add approximately 1% contribution to traffic counts. Is that, is that an estimate, or did, how did we get to that number of 1%? And the applicant or-
He's referring to the letter you all wrote, that just described your view on the potential impact on traffic.
The previous plan that was actually submitted, it was submitted for 16 units, and it met the, the traffic requirement, and your traffic study was not required based, we are a lot lower density than the previous one that was recommended.
But that was his study?
That was basically his, his study, the engineer, the previous owner that did.
Previous study was done?
So, I'm, I'm not sure if the previous, the study was done, but what they said on the 16, what he submitted, that a traffic study was not required because it wasn't adding much traffic to the flow already. So we are proposing a lot less units than what he recommended. That's what I'm saying.
And, and I think we included the engineering traffic analysis in our report, so the 1%, I don't know what that would correlate with, but the, the stuff in the staff report is the numbers for this development.
Okay. Please stay, I have a couple more questions to Commissioner Larson.
Thank you, Commissioner Ohm. I, I noted in here at the, at the community meeting, there was originally a plan, or a conceptual plan to have 12 units, and that was reduced to 10.
Correct.
How, how did the plan change to get you from 12 to 10?
Well, during the meeting, after talking to the neighbors, they didn't like the height of the townhouses. First of all, they didn't like townhouses, period. And then they didn't like the three stories. So, and they thought it was too many units for that lot. So we went down to 10 units, made the duplexes in the middle more like a ranch, actually. If you look at it from 38th Avenue, it's like a ranch style, so it's not three stories high, except, with the exception of the two end ones. So we lowered the units, and we made them more like a ranch style, so you don't have that issue.
What, what did you eliminate in order to get from 12 to 10 units?
What did we eliminate?
We initially were proposing a row of eight townhomes, and we changed from eight townhomes to three duplexes.
To three duplexes, yeah.
And so the, the one row of duplexes became single-family?
No, it was always going to be four homes, well, we, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Four, four single families in a row of eight townhomes, making up for the 12. We got rid of the townhomes. The neighbors were vehemently against townhomes. We thought we were trying to be, accommodate and compromise and change from eight townhomes to three duplexes.
Okay. Okay, well, that, that, thank you for clarifying that. That makes, makes perfect sense now. The other issue I, I have, and this goes back to the previous, which had nothing to do with you guys, but the previous applicant, there were discussions during that meeting about the, the angle of the coming off of 38th as you're driving in, and how that's a fairly steep drop-off from 38th down to where the alley is. And there was concern that in maybe inclement weather, the, that steep slope would create some problems with possibly sliding down the road and that kind of thing. And I forget what the response is at the time, I'm sure this is something you guys have considered, though, right?
Yes. Actually, the difference between the previous and this one, the house in that corner, that lot where that street is straight across from 38th, the alley, that is setback a lot further than the previously recommended, that what the previous gentleman had before us. The setback is a lot further, so allows a lot more room.
Right, and, and, and that certainly makes sense as well. The, the concern, though, and I'm, I'm not sure if I'm, I'm really hearing, the, when you, when you have a, I, I think that at the time, the discussion was around about 10 degrees, which is fairly steep. Coming off of 38th, you're going to be both going up, could be a problem, and coming down. And is there some way to maybe reduce the, the grade a little bit so you're not quite as steep? 10 degrees, as you know, is fairly steep.
I, I'm sure that's something you could-
So I, I can speak to that a little bit. During the detailed design phase, we'll definitely be looking at that, Public Works. You know, CDOT limits driveway slopes to 10%, so that is kind of within the range of feasibility. We like to see city streets at eight or less. So there are things you can do during detailed design, possibly retaining walls or things of that nature, but we, we will definitely be looking at that, reviewing that during the SDP phase, and I think it's a problem that can be solved.
Okay, okay, fair enough. And then it, help me out here on understanding how that, the adjacent duplex development, Stanley, I think it's called, well, whatever it's called. Is there a retaining wall in place now?
The one on the east side?
To the east, yes.
Yes, yes.
Is there a retaining wall there now, or will one be constructed, or?
There is one there right now.
There is, there is one there. Believe it's on the property line, or walk, near the property line.
Right, right, because it is several feet above what would be the, the grade for this, right?
There is a concrete wall right there.
And you don't plan to change that at all, or?
We, we haven't got that far.
Okay, okay.
And, and one thing you could do, if the driveway does end up being pretty steep, you could put a, some sort of retaining wall, smaller retaining wall on the west side of that driveway, which would be a little tight with the, the duplex right there, but it is, it is doable.
Okay. And then, and the, the only other concern there, when you have a fairly steep slope like this, that runoff is going to be an issue, and it sounds like, and I'm, the capacity, I guess the carrying capacity of the detention, well, the pond and then the subsurface, is enough to handle a big storm?
Yes, and it appears that what they've allotted for in the space should account for that. We haven't done the detailed calculations yet, but it, it looks like, you know, rule of thumb that it will work. The, the alleyway is also, I think, reverse-crowned, so there's plenty of capacity to carry that runoff down the center of the alleyway. And as typical, you'd have swales between the homes.
Okay. Again, it, it is a consideration, and particularly when you've got a, a fairly steep slope like this, that it, that it gets addressed.
And it would be addressed in the future phase. So just a reminder, the development plan, outline development plan is just about permitted uses, development standards, and general developability, and we definitely believe this is a developable property. Certainly properties in Wheat Ridge and elsewhere with more slope, but a lot of those types of details, we're saying we don't know yet because we're not at the phase to know. So this, the code allows this to be a two-step process, and the next step would have civil construction drawings, a full drainage report, and answers to all of those questions in, in significant more detail.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Boss?
I do have some questions. Looking at this slide that we have up here right now, the single-family home to the west has like this much driveway, and the one on the east has this much driveway. Is that a real view? So are you getting two cars on that pad on the west, single-family driveway?
So the, the building on, the single-family house on the west is one of the ones that we are saying does not have room for, for, set a driveway off the house. It has a two-car garage, a small pull-up- garage, a small pull-up, but it, but it would not be, it's one of the three that does not really have room for a full driveway space. The one on the east side, you know, this is still conceptual. I think it's going to be something I'd want to check with, with grading, and see where the best location is to set it. But yes, it does not need to have a full, that one could fit four cars right now. I think that, you know, will be something we look at each, each property and say, what's the best asset of this? Is it better to push it up, and they only get two cars? Or is it better to, to, to keep the longer driveway and, and, you know, get a better view from the west, you know, or, I'm sorry, of the west, off the deck?
So, is that driveway on the west, single-family home, long enough to accommodate a car entirely?
On the west side? No.
No.
No. And we, we have stated that, 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 that property and then the two end units of the duplexes don't, don't necessarily have that. They don't have it.
All right. And then, going back to the duplexes, could we see that slide?
Of the exteriors of them?
Yeah.
That's the full ones, and then I have a close-up, too.
Well, so my concern is, and question is, why do we still maintain the three-story on either end if we're talking about density and look, driving up Thirty-Eighth, all of a sudden, you've got two, three-story standouts?
Well, it does give some variety to it as well, but I, I don't know why you guys picked those two. Was it, you know, that it was?
In order to fit the, the size of you, you needed the end ones. Since you cannot go, because the lot is smaller, you have to go up.
Okay. And then, what kind of view with these two towers on Thirty-Eighth, are they getting from the east looking west? Is that?
The front of the house will be looking on Thirty-Eighth, so it'll be looking north. And then, the, the back of the units will be looking at the single-family homes.
No, no, I'm talking about the existing housing that's east of this development. What kind of a view are they going to have with those two towers there?
They are, they are much higher.
So, they're not going to have the view from those houses to the east, then? No?
They're not. They are much higher than that current property. We are actually below them. I don't know how far, but...
Yeah. I just, I just wanted to make that point, that they are losing their view. I do have some concerns about that driveway off of Thirty-Eighth, and I was wondering if maybe that could be a one-way off of Thirty-Eighth, down the hill, going down the hill, not a, just one-way, and then everything goes out Thirty-Eighth. And so, you have more of a loop instead of people trying to make it up the hill when it's slippery and wet and visibility. And maybe down the hill would be better. So, I'd just throw that out to you for that possibility. And I think that's what I have at this time.
Commissioner Currents?
I have a couple questions. So, I have, the first thing is, I have a concern definitely on that western house with zero driveway. The biggest reason is because there's no parking on that alley. I just, I, I don't see how that quite works. But my, my question is, is why, I'm just looking at this. I've seen some examples of houses on Thirty-Second that have garages that are, I guess I would say perpendicular, not perpendicular, they're like at a ninety where you kind of come in a driveway, and then you do like a ninety into the garage. Not my personal preference, but I've seen them. But my question is, is just looking at this, why is the house in the far east, it seems like, it seems like it's pushed as far west as it can probably go within the setback? And that, I'm assuming that the building setback actually would can, actually goes a lot further east than where the building is shown. And, and, but you've just decided to, for this conceptual purposes, showing that building is far west. And so, as that goes far west, and as it pushes everything, then we're, you know, we're, we're left with that one building with zero drive and no parking. And, and then we do have the, the extra parking, but there's, there's a lot of assumptions that those, one of the, one or two of those spaces are going to be open. So, that's, that's one of the questions I have. And then, the second question of that same area is that, my understanding is that underground storage is typically expensive, way more expensive than traditional detention or even rain gardens. And I'm, I'm guessing that probably the natural grade, the low point of the entire site is probably on that southeast side. That would be the low point, on the very southeast corner, southeast. Is it, is it the southwest is the lowest? Oh, okay. Because I just thought that, I guess that, that answers that. But yeah, if you could just answer, I guess, the, the, the no drive on that west house, I do have concerns over that one.
The west house?
The very, yeah, the far west.
I think we're just limited because of the angle of the lot. And I'm not sure if we want to look at something different design-wise or something, but to accommodate it, to get us one, but that's, because we have the parking close by in the off-site, we are off, because it's not a traditional street either, we kind of felt like it would be all right to have that be accommodated by the, by the off-site, on-site parking right next door to it.
The only other thing I could recommend, the additional parkings could be moved further east, so make it easier for the house on the west side to have side parking.
But it would not be necessarily designated for that property.
Right, right.
Yeah, it just, it just seems kind of, I think the biggest thing is because there's no parking on the street, and there's, there's not even a drive. I've seen some short driveways that I questioned. I think, I'm just concerned that it would, it would work great for somebody who doesn't own a car. And there, there are some people that don't own cars. But it's, I'm just not sure that we're there yet.
We can certainly take a look at maybe not having as big a deck off of that one, or, you know, changing the size of that house to accommodate a larger driveway to something that would easily fit another car in, or to push the house back.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't know what that solution is, or if there's some type of ninety, ninety or something. But, but just, I'm just, I'm concerned that this is just going to be a, a problem, what there's going to be somebody, that that, that house is going to, going to have a friend that's going to want to stop by. And, and hopefully those four aren't taking up. But I know that sometimes it's, those four spaces could go pretty quick. And there might be some people that just consistently just use two or three of those spaces all the time. Okay, that's, that's the only, that's the only question I had, comment for the applicants. Are there any, the staff, or commissioners, have any other questions? Go ahead.
One follow-up question on the building height on the duplex, duplexes on either end. It says here in the staff report that the two end, end units will be thirty feet high, and they'll be higher than the twenty-five feet of the, the ones in the middle. Do we, do we have something that indicates the grade level for the Iris Court buildings, which are right next door, the duplexes, versus how much of a drop-off it is to where, where these are located? No, okay. I imagine we would see an elevation diagram on the, when we get to that point, right?
We don't, you don't typically see the elevations of other buildings on SDPs. You'd see, you'd be establishing through this document, the maximum height that applies to this property. The maximum height that applies everywhere else is thirty-five feet. The property on Iris Court is a straight zone district, so its maximum height is thirty-five feet. What the actual height is, we don't have record of that.
That's fine. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Go ahead.
This is, there was some concern about the duplexes and the end buildings being higher. This is an aesthetic question, so I have to apologize to the architect. But as I, as I sit here and look at those, the, if I think about them as building blocks, they can be rearranged in several different configurations, right?
I agree. And I don't have final rating to know exactly how they're going to line up with each other.
Yeah.
So, I am just at a conceptual stage right now.
Yeah. But you can, you can mix and match.
I don't know if we can or not, but as, as we talk about it, I've been wondering, you know, if it's something we can talk about, that, that the two units, I, I don't know. And I don't want to, I don't want to put any ideas out there if they have already been suggested.
Okay. Yeah, because it's...
But they're definitely something, so it's...
Yeah. But, but they are sort of like building blocks.
This is a process. Design is always a process.
Right, right, right. Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes. One thought is given in our packet was that the good of this development is because this is a vacant land, and it's been used for staging only in the past, not only, but in the past. And so, my thought is, if they're going to redo Kipling there at Thirty-Eighth, there's need for staging. And if they're going to build two developments beyond Kipling that, West, that I believe have already been approved, then there's going to be that traffic, that staging. What a mess. And also, I'm concerned about with these, all this development happening right here in this corner of water issues, traffic issues, and how if we continue to keep building out this much, this more, what, who's looked into the water issues that everybody's using in the existing communities that it's already there? I'd just leave that thought with you.
Any other questions for the applicants? Okay, thank you. I will now open up the citizens forum. There will be a three-minute time limit, and time may not be yielded to another person. I have a sign-up sheet right here. I will call off the, the names, and if you could come to the podium and state your name and address, if you want to, if you want to talk. The first one is Guy Stanfield. If you want to comment, please come to the bonnet, state your name and address. And just before you start, I would just make everybody aware that when the, the first, there'll be three different colors of lights. The, the first light, it will be green. When the green light flashes, you will have thirty seconds remaining. When the yellow light comes on, you have fifteen seconds left. And then the red light is when your time has expired.
My wife just tells me usually to shut up. My name's Guy Stanfield, ninety-eight seventy, West Thirty-seventh Avenue. I'd like to, I've been to all the meetings, and I'd like to thank you for the concessions that you did make from our community meeting, and means you were listening, and we really appreciate that. I can't speak for everybody, but I, I sure appreciate that. And then, I appreciate all the questions y'all had, because y'all have, most of those questions were our concerns. The people that are here is traffic and parking. And I don't think the, I think we have a lot, a lot of ways to go to get those questions answered. Now, you mentioned that this wasn't, you didn't have to have the elevations or things like that on the, at this meeting. So, I can't understand that we could make, because we still want to look at it. And the, the parking is a big, big issue. I mean, we have parking, until you roped off your property, there were always cars parked on your property, six to seven, almost every day. And right now, we have parking, illegal parking going on at Discovery Park. And mainly, this is because of the duplex that's north of your property. And there's about twelve cars in that, in that duplex. And they park, in the park now, and they park, they would park on your property right now if it was not roped off. And then, I don't think we've talked and, and figured out exactly about the traffic. I mean, I, I think that intersection is the most busiest intersection in Wheat Ridge, and has more accidents than any other accidents on intersection in Wheat Ridge right now. And we, we just, y'all brought up those concerns. So, we thank you for bringing up those concerns. Thank you very much. And I'll, even though the light's green, I'll sit down.
Thank you. Okay, the next person is Don McDougall. Do you wish to speak? Okay. Susan Stanfield?
Suzanne Stanfield, ninety-eight seventy, West Thirty-seventh Avenue. If we look at this piece of property, the pieces of property that we currently reside in would be two homes on that piece of property. It would be divided in half, and they would be ranch tile homes. And now, you're going to develop, and, and you've done a beautiful job, but at the same time, who's to say if our homes sell, that you are not going to rezone our pieces of property, which are large pieces of property, and I know very coveted by the city, to turn it into something like this? So, I'd like to keep that in mind, because I don't want to see our properties around us start to develop like this in the future, because we have such large pieces of property that we currently reside on. Like I said, that would be two homes of what we have right now. And so, we need to keep in mind rezoning so that we don't take that whole area that has large pieces of property and turn it into just a huge debacle of homes being built to accommodate as many people as you can squeeze into a piece of property. And I can, as one single car on Johnson, trying to get on Thirty-Eighth, I can be forever with the parade of cars that come down Thirty-Eighth from Wadsworth. And it just goes and goes and goes and goes. And I barely have enough time ever to turn onto the property, onto Thirty-Eighth, to get down to the light. And there's just huge amounts of traffic down on Thirty-Eighth and Kipling. So, I'd like you to keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is a Fran Singer. Okay. Becky Luthwait?
Becky Luthwait, ninety-eight sixty, West Thirty-seventh Avenue. And I wanted to address the buyers of the property. You seem like really nice folks, folks that I would love to have you as a neighbor. And thank you again for listening in the last meeting that we had with you, and readjusting some of your plan. My concern, too, is the number of cars. And just looking at the three duplexes, there could be a total of twelve cars per unit. And then, with the houses, maybe two cars per home. That is a total of twenty cars. I think that's minimum. We have a neighbor on our street who, whose adult children live with them. So, each of the older parents, they each have a vehicle. Then, he has a work vehicle. The adult children, there's at least two or three vehicles. That's a total of six vehicles. I don't think that these proposed units would just have two people living in each house or duplex. So, you're talking much more than twenty cars. And again, where's the parking going to be on Johnson Street? There's not enough room for cars going to and from the park, or neighbors in, that live in that neighborhood, to travel on Johnson Street and try to get by cars that might be parked there. So, that's my concern for that. So that's my concern for that. Also, when we purchased our home, we noticed that that property was vacant, and we did our due diligence and noted it was R1. Great, great. Well, now, it wants to be changed, and for what? So just some food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Margaret Nelson.
Margaret Nelson, 9865 West 37th. I'm adjacent to this property. And also, I just moved in about four years ago, and it was, you know, R1 zoning. And I came from Denver, where my neighborhood was destroyed by high-density zoning, and was gassed, you know, a couple of years ago when it was proposed again right next to me. And our city council people at the time were very clear. You know, I asked the question until they answered, and they said, "Well, yes, precedent really is a big deal." And I just, I worry about the zoning. That is my concern, because I don't want to see high-density zoning come into the neighborhood that I'm in now. I don't want to, it's a horrible thing to have to live through, it really is, when you look out your window suddenly and see nothing but wall. And that's what became of my old house, where I had just finished remodeling for aging in place. And now, I've put a lot of money into this property to improve it. And I know from experiences, I've told council before, that once this zoning takes, gets a foothold, then none of our properties are ever going to be worth any more than the land they're on. It doesn't matter how nice the house is or how crappy the house is, all the, the houses are all worth the land they're on. And I just don't want to see it again. That's a really mean thing to do to neighbors. This is a nice plan. Again, I thank you for modifying it in response to our concerns, but I don't understand why this property couldn't be subdivided at the most. Subdivided, zoned R2. Everything would, I think, fit with an R2 zoning, and it would be compatible with the R2 across the street and R2 to the east, and it wouldn't be high-density zoning. So. And also, my thought is that if this high-density zoning comes in, then the city will say, "Well, half of this block is high-density zoning, therefore," and use that as an excuse to proceed further into the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next is Delane Novak.
Hi. My name's Delane Novak. I live at 9795 West 38th. A handshake. There is traffic on that street immensely. It is so busy. Okay. And the next concern is the duplex on the east side, the height. Okay, so I look out my living room window, and I can see the snow and just the fences that are for the duplexes to the east. Just their height of the fence, people are slipping and falling on the sidewalks. And so now, you've got, you know, even higher going onto the street. So those two duplexes on each end is going to really, there's going to be more ice, and that's my big concern. And also, the traffic, because there is some traffic there. I've seen numerous accidents, numerous. But anyway, that's my big concern. Thanks.
Thank you. Carol Matthews.
Carol Matthews, 3851 Hoyt Street, Wheat Ridge. R1 to PRD. Citizens spoke in the last election and voiced their opinion against R1s to PRDs. High-density housing is not a priority in the minds of Wheat Ridge citizens. Consultants from NRS study, which I was one of the 23, this NRS was hired by the city, proclaimed in 2005 and reiterated in 2019 that the Wheat Ridge future prosperity depends on strong households. This PRD will make valuable, single-family property, residential 1, more high-density property with rentals. We have 48% rentals right now and have not even counted the high density on Wadsworth and up them. The citizens of Wheat Ridge spoke. They wanted a say to their neighborhoods. The other thing that the city of Wheat Ridge staff has forgotten to mention is that the citizens of Wheat Ridge just made a tremendous investment in Discovery Park. You guaranteed the citizens that if they invested their money and the land was dedicated to open space, that it would be a property that people could enjoy. And what's going to happen to that? Johnson is the access to Discovery Park. There's a huge parking lot up there. If these people who don't have driveway spaces, and we have a history of rentals and duplexes in our area, the two duplexes between Holland and Hoyt, on any given weekend, have 19 cars parked into two duplexes. It obstructs the view, their trashcans are overflowing onto our streets, and they have no tolerance for residential properties, and the city doesn't enforce it. What kind of future does this give our R1 households? Our average household in that area, our homes are worth over $500,000. And why are they worth that? Because of breathing space. People move from Highlands, Denver, everywhere to Wheat Ridge for breathing space. Let's preserve that. That intersection on 38th and Johnson is a really dangerous intersection now. Add 40 more cars and people parking on the street, and try Google. Even when Google photographed it, John, or Discovery Park is a.
Yeah, I'm going to three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you.
Odarca Figlis.
My name is Odarca Figlis, and I think my pen ran out of ink there. It's O-D-A-R-K-A-Figlis. And since we. Your address, please. Oh, I'm sorry. 10580 West 34th Avenue in Wheat Ridge, about Nelson. I apologize, I had a presentation prepared, but I'm going to go backwards because we have the time limit, so please bear with me. The most important thing I want to talk about is the PRD regulations. If you look at the regulations before you get into the nitty-gritty of how the PRDs should be formed, it states, "The planned development process may not be used to circumvent the intent and spirit of the protections afforded by this chapter." This is incredibly important, so I will repeat it for the audience. "The planned development process may not be used to circumvent the intent and spirit of the protections afforded by this chapter," which is the zoning chapter, which talks about the protections that we have in our residential districts. PRD, to use a PRD in this case to enhance the layout of four homes on this property would be appropriate, but to propose a PRD for those four homes and throw in an additional six units is not appropriate. This is not conjecture on my part. I know, I was part of the discussion, and I was part of the voting body on city council when we passed this, so I do know about this part. So, again, I don't think that you can even consider this proposal, because it does not conform to this very important piece that was intentionally put into the law. Then, when we go to the criteria for approval, first one is about promotes health and welfare. Heard about traffic, there's a problem with parking. There's a problem with the traffic at the park, a lot of the problems that we talked about last time in the last proposal. I'm running out of time, so I will say, "Conformance with the comp plan." R1 is in conformance with the comp plan. Planning documents of the city say that we are overrelying on planned developments, that that's not good for the property. None of the criteria for rezoning have been met, and so I think you have no choice but to vote to recommend denial of this proposal. And the other, one more thing is there's parking on Johnson, which requires street widening, which, as you all know, requires street with designation, including legal protest and the probability of a referendum if that is attempted. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Duty.
I live at 3460 Independence Court. I've lived in this neighborhood for 25 years. It has basically stayed the same, and that's why I like it. It's all pretty much designated R1. 91, 90% of it is R1. I remember when the Iris Court project went in, they said, because our fears were the same, they said that would not be used against us to get another large development in. It was a one-off. And here we are yet again. This property would be great for four homes, not for 10. And that's about all I got to say.
Thank you. And Thor Figlis.
My name is Ihor Figlis. I live at 9775 West 36th Avenue. I just want to run through pretty quickly the actual proposal here. So, the setbacks between these duplexes are very narrow and really not attractive. I mean, this is going to create a monolithic type of structure. And as you know, ODPs, yeah, they tell you, "We can't change the number of units," but that doesn't mean that you can't change the configuration of those 10 units, as, you know, happened at 45th and Yarrow, which a lot of citizens complained about. So, I mean, there's only six feet between these duplex units. What's the point? I mean, you just build them together, make one long unit, 30 feet tall, monolithic. Yeah. That doesn't fit this neighborhood. The properties, the lots assigned to these units are 4,000 square feet or less, eight of them. The duplexes to the east average 6,500 square feet per unit. Okay? That's more than 90% of the properties in this proposal. The, this is just completely out of character with the neighborhood. The neighborhood is one family residential. And all this stuff about what's going on to the east of Kipling, I'm sorry, Kipling and Discovery Park are a boundary of this neighborhood. What's over there might as well be at Youngfield, because it's not part of the neighborhood. The neighborhood boundary is defined by Kipling and by Discovery Park. And the character of the neighborhood is defined by the buildings that are built to the south and to the east of this property. And so this doesn't fit. Four units does fit. I agree with the previous thing that a PRD, in order to make them fit, would be appropriate, but it's not appropriate to squeeze in this much housing into properties. This is going to bring down property values, it's going to make the area, especially the properties next door to it, unattractive for the future. And I think that's it. I think that the plan, I encourage you to vote to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's everybody that was on the list. If there's anybody in the audience that was not signed up but still wishes to speak, please come forward. Is there anybody out there that hasn't had a chance to speak? Seeing none, I will now close the citizens forum, and we will now go through the questions that the citizens asked. So there's quite a few, there's quite a few, I'll just go over real quick, there's quite a few, obviously, in zoning, parking, traffic. One of the questions was brought up was R2 zoning, and what is the DU per a typical R2 versus what the applicant is proposing?
In R2 zoning, you need 9,000 square feet of lot area for a single-family home and 12,500 square feet of lot area for a duplex.
For lot size, but what is the, like?
Our code doesn't work on a density standpoint, except for a maximum, so, I mean, it would, again, it would vary. So if you had four duplexes in R2, then you'd be at eight units per acre, which, right, 12.5 is a quarter of an acre.
So duplexes are allowed in R2?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
So eight per acre is about what this density is shown.
So if this was entirely R2, you could have eight duplexes? A little bit more than eight?
I probably can't do that mental math right now. It's going to be hard to compare. I mean, the purpose of tonight is to focus on the density of this project.
Correct. There were some concerns over rezoning. If their property sell, I would imagine that's, once you sell the property, that is up to the next person who ever buys it to their purview of whether or not they're going to rezone it.
Right, yep. I mean, I've heard people's comments tonight, every zone change stands on its own. We will always look at the adjacent land use and zoning patterns. You know, the comprehensive plan specifically calls for diversifying our housing stock. Does not say that we should have residential homes that are all on, you know, quarter of an acre lots. It specifically calls for more options for folks who want starter homes or want to stay in place but can't maintain a lot of that size. It calls for investing in vacant properties on primary corridors. It does not call for zone changing of established and already developed neighborhoods. So I don't anticipate a domino effect of change to the development or neighborhood to the south where there are already longstanding and existing developed lots with single-family homes.
And then, as far as cars, does Johnson have, do you know if Johnson has like permit parking?
If it has permit parking?
Yeah.
I don't know.
The street that runs north-south by Discovery?
I don't know.
Would you, one of the comments was, this was considered a high-density zoning. By city standards, is this high-density zoning, what is currently proposed?
Density, like, traffic is always sort of relative in the eye of the beholder. It is not more dense than the Iris Court development to the immediate west. It is more dense than the R1 development to the south. It is common in Wheat Ridge and other communities to have something that is slightly more dense or intense on a busier quarter like 38th or Wadsworth or 44th. It is not considered high-dense from our adopted documents and zoning codes, where in Wheat Ridge, 21 DU per acre is considered higher-dense on our spectrum.
And then, is the proposed zoning in conformance with the comp plan?
Staff believes it is. You know, the consistency with the comprehensive plan and all the city's adopted documents and goals is an extremely important criteria when you look at any zone change, for the reasons that we've stated. The comp plan specifically calls for investment in vacant or blighted properties. The comp plan specifically calls for diversifying the housing stock, and specifically calls for development that's compatible with adjacent neighborhoods. We acknowledge that this is slightly higher-dense than the R1 neighborhood to the south, but the land use of duplex and single-family, and notably, the change from previous designs of townhomes, is consistent with the land use patterns that we see in this particular area.
Would there be a density that is higher than what the applicant is showing that would still be in conformance with the current comp plan?
I mean, I think you could argue that, right? There's, again, it's relative, but we've seen a higher-dense product fail to be approved. So from a political reality standpoint, I don't know that there's a lot of appetite for something more dense than this.
And then, there were some view concerns, rental concerns. I would imagine that those are kind of out of the control of the developer once those properties sell, that those are property owner choices.
What was the concern?
The rental.
Rental, right. So. So there's no document or ability for the city to control whether these are owner-occupied or renter-occupied. The pattern that we've seen with new development, given the price points, is that it's often owner-occupied, but that's certainly not something that we can have any control over based on federal fair housing law.
And then, the last question I have is probably for Mr. Jeffries. There was a comment about slope, and the, I noticed that you, you said that the 10% is allowed on the streets. There is an, an attached sidewalk. What is the max slope on that sidewalk that is allowable?
Um, there's various rules for ADA compliance, and I'm not privy to all of them. We have an ADA coordinator who looks at some of that stuff. Typically, I, I think your sidewalks are, you try to aim for 5% or less, but there are allowances when, often your streets are steeper than that.
Such as Kipling?
Exactly. And you don't have a choice. For example, 32nd and Kipli, or 38th and Kipli, I'm sorry, 32nd and Kipling, as you go north on Kipling, it's very steep there. I think it's pushing 8 to 10%.
And I know Independence is pretty steep, too. Up, uh, north of, just north of this project, a little bit, north and east. Okay. Did any other commissioners have any questions?
This goes to a, a point that was brought up, and, and there was a comment in the staff report about if the property had, was to stay R1, which would limit it to four homes, the, there isn't a developer that would agree to develop that property because the prices of the houses would be too high for the market, which is part of the motivation for the developer, this developer, seeking zoning change.
Is that a question?
Yeah, yeah, there, there's a question. I'm just trying to think of what it is. Is, am I getting the motivation here for why we're looking at a zone change as opposed to just leaving it R1? That it's not developable as...
I can't address the developer, applicant's motivation, but I can tell you, just based on the patterns that we've seen over the last decade, it's a vacant lot at a prime corner that has not pursued any type of development application. It's a very challenging property. It's a weird shape. It's got topo. It's a corner lot. And I would suspect that for most people that have investigated the potential purchase, they're looking at the economics. We are never looking at the economics, right? Staff's not privy to somebody's pro forma, what the bottom line needs to be, but certainly we hear that as a factor in terms of how many units, anything can make sense. From our standpoint, this is a, a, a great candidate for a planned development. You heard an excerpt from our code on planned development. The purpose of a planned development is not to circumvent the zoning, meaning it doesn't, it must still meet the overall intent of the zoning code. Deliver high-quality design, thoughtful site design, logical growth, appropriate land use. Giving a planned development that has, has to meet all those intents. And for something that has weird configurations of site size, topo, that's, that's why staff recommends a planned development in situations like this, where it's not flat, square, rectangular, or otherwise ideally suited to sort of traditional development.
Go ahead.
I had one question, in that this property has been before us before, and City Council, do we get to know, because I don't think I attended City Council at that time, why there, what was the reason for their denial?
They weren't denied. We did include it in the staff report. It failed to be approved in that it didn't have enough positive votes. There was a legal protest filed against it at City Council that requires a supermajority of six positive votes. It only had five positive votes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Very quickly, what's, um, what's the protest? What was the...
Legal protest.
So there's a provision in the code and the charter that allows a certain number of property owners within any distance of a zone change to submit a formal written protest to the zone change. That code language was recently updated, but in short, if you hit the minimum number of signers, it requires the council approve the zone change by a supermajority of council. Doesn't affect the planning commission vote.
Are there any other, yes?
One more question on, on process here. The, if the City Council approves, the specific plan would come back here? And we'd go through the same process again? Planning commission looks at it, and then it goes back to the City Council?
No. So if City Council approves the rezoning, then Planning Commission will be the only group that looks at the specific development plan? So that's similar to other developments we've seen where the zoning's already approved. You're just looking at the site plan, landscape plan, and architecture. And that doesn't go to council? Same notification and everything?
So, tonight, could you remind us that we're, we're just looking at the zoning, the ODP? We're not necessarily looking at architecture?
Right. So the purpose of the development plan, the outlined development plan, the subject of tonight's hearing is strictly look at permitted uses and development standards. So things like height, density, minimum parking, minimum setbacks. You've seen illustrations, such as the one on the screen, that would give you an example of what development with those standards could look like, but by no means are we looking at the architecture or the specifics of the site design. You're just getting a general sense of the max number of units and sort of how it would lay out. With this zoning, if it were to be approved, you could not modify the number of units or those setbacks or those heights without going back through this process. And it would ensure that you'd see something that looks roughly like this on, at your review with the specific development plan.
Well, I would hope then that, that staff and the, and the developer takes away from tonight's meeting some of the issues that were brought up, some of the concerns we have. I'm not sure what we can do about parking, but certainly the drainage, we want to make sure that's very clarified by the time we get to that point. And then the slope of the driveway coming down. There are some real questions there that will have to be addressed.
Sure. Any other questions, comments?
Excuse me. Lauren, I want to go back over what you said. So, we approve it, setbacks and those type of things are set. And to change those would come through this process, we'd have to come through the whole process again.
Correct.
Thank you.
I want to just make a comment to the community that, in my mind, this is a great transition. And from the R1 and R2 uses into this more of an activity node at 38th and Kipling. Now, this is also a very walkable parcel. You have walkable access to the grocery store, to the park, to the school, and to the rec center. To me, this seems like a really good use of a, of a PRD zoning. So, that's where I sit.
Any other questions or comments?
Just comment that, in my mind, I, I hear what Commissioner Kearns is saying. My mind immediately goes to just the worst-case scenario, not the best. And that's what I'm struggling with in terms of my thoughts of how to move forward. I'm thinking the worst-case scenario. Can't park, traffic, not the best-case scenario.
Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion. It's on page nine.
I move to recommend approval of case number WZ19-07, or request for approval of a zone change from residential one to planned residential development with an outlined development plan ODP for property located at 9,800 West 38th Avenue for the following reasons. One, the proposed zone change will promote the public health, safety, or welfare of the community and does not result in adverse effect on the surrounding area. Two, the proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city con, of the city's comprehensive plan. Three, the proposed zoning density and land use are consistent with the intent of a planned development compatible with surrounding land uses and will result in a high-quality development. Four, the infrastructure in the area can support the development. And five, the criteria used to evaluate a zone change support the request.
Can I get a second? Okay. Further discussion? Is there any more other discussion?
I guess I want to make an amendment to the motion. And the amendment revolves around number three. Density was brought up here, and I understand the issue, and I understand what happened to 2E at the last election. But I was just, I sat up here and I figured out the density of this place, and it's 37% of what's allowed on a PRD right now. It's up to 21 units per acre, right? Yeah. So this is 37% of what's allowed. So the density here is actually fairly low for a PRD. So, if I could modify it, in number three, the proposed zoning and land use are consistent with the intent of the planned development compatible with surrounding blah, blah, blah. So in other words, you drop the word "density" from that line? And add item number six, the property density is less than half of the allowable density for this zone?
So that, you can start as a friendly amendment if the first and the second would accept that change to the motion? Can say yes or no?
I propose it.
Because really, what you're, because what this is, is this is, these are conditions. It says, "For the following reasons."
Right.
Sure, he could, and you can do a friendly amendment to modify the reasons if our Commissioners Kearns and Larson...
I have no objection. It's up to the...
I, I wouldn't object either. It's just the, the, it seems unnecessary. The, what we're, what we're voting on this evening is whether this case, whether we should approve a zone change based on this criteria. And the fact that it's, comes in at, at least as proposed, as less than, I, I just see as irrelevant. And as a friendly amendment, I, I have no objection to that. It just doesn't seem like it's necessary.
It, it has to do with the political climate.
What is, what does staff's, I guess, why, why does staff, why does staff go through the list of reasons? Is that so that it, um...
The purpose of creating reasons is to create a record that substantiates your recommendation. So just from a procedural standpoint, you know, you don't need to probably debate this at length, but just Commissioners Kearns and Larson, if you would agree to modify the reasons that you read as Commissioner Peterson proposed, then you can say yes or no. It's not a...
Yes, I'll, I'll agree.
I would have no objection to that.
Okay.
And would Commissioner Peterson, would you repeat that?
Number three, you just dropped the word "density." And number six, the proposed density is less than half the allowable density for this zone?
And staff, staff can verify that correctly? That it's half the, that that is correct, what he's saying?
Yes.
Okay. I think my, the comment I have on, on this is the, I could have seen higher density, but from trying to buffer the, the existing residences to the south and having that single-family, I think that creates a, a better transition. And then, it does work in the applicant's favor that there is some grade change from the east going to the, to the west. I would, I get, I would kind of ask staff that they kind of look at the, some of the concerns we had over the, the driveway. I had some concerns over that building setback in that southeast corner of, I think it was the duplex, was it five or six on that corner? That, that won't be a, an issue. I know I've, that was my, my only two concerns. Does anybody else have any other comments or discussion?
There was a great point made about ice. The shadows cast on the north sides of these buildings onto 38th Ave, especially the, the end cap buildings. You, you probably will see an accumulation of ice on the sidewalk and possibly on the road. So, that's also, should be considered.
Any other discussion? Go for vote.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. We will now move on toward...
Sorry, four to two.
Okay, our next case. I open the public hearing for case number WZ-19-05 and WA-19-05, an application filed by Real E Solutions LLC for approval of a specific development plan and variance on property-zoned planned commercial development for the construction of a 7,000-square-foot office slash warehouse building located at 12060 West 52nd Avenue. And would ask that anyone from the public, applicant and staff who wishes to testify or comment, please stand and raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth in this matter as you know it?
I do.
Thank you, and ask for the staff report.
All right. Welcome back. My name's Scott Cutler, planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. Presenting case numbers WZ-1905 and WA-1905, which is approval of a specific development plan and variance. Like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning regulations, and this digital presentation. Properties within the city of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear the case.
So noted.
This is a 2018 aerial view of the property. Property's outlined in red. It's about half an acre. It's currently vacant. The south side of 52nd Avenue between Vivian Street and Union is the location, and unincorporated Jefferson County is across 52nd Avenue to the north. Surrounding area is a mix of uses, but mostly light industrial on the south side. Commuter rail is a quarter-mile walking distance away. There are some nearby multifamily developments under construction to the west and east along 52nd Avenue. And the city is planning on improving the 52nd Avenue corridor in 2020 with curb, gutter, sidewalks, and a center turn lane. Zoning map, the site is zoned planned commercial development, and the Wheat Ridge Industrial Center PID, planned industrial development, is adjacent to the southwest. There's some industrial zoning to the east, which facilitates, oh, sorry. And then there's some TD zoning to the south and west, which facilitates dense, mixed-use development adjacent to the commuter rail station. And again, across the street is Jefferson County. Their quest this evening, the applicant is proposing an office warehouse building with a total of 8,050 gross square feet with a 7,000-square-foot footprint. They intend to fully occupy the space with their company, SNS Plumbing. And the site plan on the next slide will show some of the features listed here, which include a parking lot, water detention pond, landscaped buffer area, and two points of access. The SDP document consists of seven pages. The landscape plan on page three of the SDP in the staff report is shown here and zoomed in for your reference. This gives the most detail in terms of how the site will actually function. The staff report goes into some greater detail about the site plan and landscape plan, but I'll describe some of the main features. The building is located towards 52nd Avenue with a parking lot surrounding on the south and east sides. The building is just behind the future sidewalk on 52nd Avenue, which complies with the city's build-to requirement in this area. There's a water detention pond on the east side... There's a water detention pond on the east side of the property, which will collect and drain into a storm system, and is filled with natural grasses and a decorative retaining wall. There are loading doors on the west side, which are accessed through a shared drive that has an access easement, and this access easement was confirmed by the fire department to also allow fire department access to the site. There are landscaping buffers along the east and west sides of the property, and then the main entrance is located on the east side of the building with an accessible sidewalk connecting to the street. These are some of the elevations for the building. There are other elevations included in the staff report. These are colorful, so they help us look at the materials a little bit more detail. North elevation shown on the screen at the top faces Fifty-second Avenue and includes ground floor windows, manufactured stone columns with downlighting, and a pitched roof with an overhang. There's also an overhang over the main entrance on the left side of this elevation for some weather protection. These elevations do comply with the Architectural and Site Design Manual for the city for light industrial and heavy commercial buildings. Elevations which face or can be viewed from public streets are required to be enhanced with primary materials such as stone, which is provided here, and must provide some transparency, which is why there are windows located along the first floor. The rear elevation, which is not shown, but is included in the staff report, is not visible from any public space and is therefore just metal paneling. To give some history on the variance request, which is another case we're looking at tonight, the applicant originally got the ODP for the site approved in 2003, but now that they're ready to develop the site, they have more employees and more need for office space. The ODP had an atypical requirement with actually a maximum percentage of office space for office and warehouse uses. And typically, the opposite is true, where a minimum of twenty-five percent office and higher in commercial developments. The applicant has requested the variance to have more of a fifty-fifty split of office to warehouse, so that their employees can have office space and a break room. Parking requirements, which are higher for office than warehouse, can still be met on the site even with the increased percentage of office space. And this site provides more parking, which is actually required by code. Granting this variance will allow the applicant to operate their business fully in this location and house all employees on site. This is not a use variance, but rather the proposed use is permitted by the ODP. It's just about the ratio of office to warehouse space. To give some background, City Council approved the rezoning of this property all the way back in 2003, and the property has not developed since, but the SDP is based on the standards approved under the ODP. Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, so we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, fire, water, and so forth, and completed an internal review. Both the Engineering Division and Planning Division have found the SDP, and that should say variance, not plat, to be approvable. And outside agencies have no remaining comments. The applicant will be responsible for coordinating utility service, and in this instance, the civil documents for the site are also approved. Before the hearing, the property was posted for fifteen days, and letters were sent to property owners within a three-hundred-foot radius, including Jefferson County. There were no comments received on Wheat Ridge Speaks for this application. So for conclusions, we've concluded the request meets the variance criteria. It will allow the development of the site as requested by the SDP to proceed and will not have a substantial impact on the surrounding area. And for the SDP, we find that it is consistent with the ODP and is also in compliance with the standards set forth in the ODP, the city code, and the Architectural and Site Design Manual. It's consistent with the purpose of a planned development, and all agencies can serve the property. For those reasons, staff is recommending approval of the request. There are recommended conditions of approval in the staff report, and for this hearing, two motions will be required, first for the variance and then for the SDP, because they're two separate cases and therefore two separate recommendations. But the SDP approval is dependent on approval of the variance. The variance requires a supermajority of present commissioners to pass, but the SDP only requires a simple majority. And we can go through that once it comes time to make a motion if you don't remember that. But that concludes my presentation, and I believe the applicant is here if they want to introduce themselves and give a brief presentation. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson? We will, what we'll do just for the audience is we'll ask questions to staff first, and then we'll have the applicant come up. I don't think there's anybody else in the audience, but I'll still open up, I still have to open up the citizens forum, and then, and then after that, we'll have a discussion and make a motion. No questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Simba?
My questions are, I have two, they're more procedural. So just in terms of timeframe, I mean, this was quite some time ago that the ODP was approved. Obviously, it must be allowed, but it seems like we should do something different after such a long period of time, seventeen years. So I just want to make that comment. Maybe you could respond to that, Lauren or Scott.
Sure. Yep, so outlined development plans do not expire. Once zoning is approved, it exists in perpetuity. So the parallel example would be if somebody were to rezone to MUN, a vacant piece but never redeveloped, the MUN zoning would stay. So that zoning stays in perpetuity, whether it's a straight zone district or an outline development plan. Just a little bit of history, I will add. We did rewrite the planned development regulations maybe seven years ago now, and we had that specific policy discussion, I believe with Planning Commission and definitely with council, of whether there should be a sunset, so whether they should automatically expire if they're not developed. That discussion was happening more during the time of the recession, so there was particular sensitivity to the fact that it may be an entitlement that is made, and then there are a multitude of legitimate reasons, I think probably this project is one of them, why things are delayed more than, than happens. We have a couple other projects in the city that probably saw maybe ten-year gaps in just in my time between the ODP and the SDP. Those that sort of languish and then aren't relevant, they just come back as new zone change cases. So, you know, while there's things I think we'd change about some of our older ODPs just to meet sort of our current contemporary standards, many of them are still very good documents that give us good direction on what a land use and development standard could be.
Thank you. And then the second question again is procedural. So supermajority in this case, what does that mean?
Five.
This question goes kind of the heart of the variance request. Help me understand the original ODP and its restriction on office space. Was that something requested, or was it something that was already in place in terms of if we provide, if we approve the ODP, then the percentage of office space is X?
So it was tied to the actual use, which was office warehouse, which includes plumbing companies, contractors, things like that. It was written into the ODP for whatever reason. We don't typically see that ratio written into the ODP. Typically, we would just follow city code, which is actually typically the reverse, where warehouse is by far the majority and then office space is just a minimal. But in this case, it was the opposite. And if I mix that up, I'm sorry. There, it was flipped from what is standard for some reason.
So if somebody were to apply for a new one somewhere else today, and would it be part of their request in terms of percentage of office space, or would it be sort of applied automatically? That you're going to mixed use and you're putting in a warehouse, and you are allowed to have, it's you I'm trying to get to that.
Yeah, so our, in our, like, in our straight industrials and districts, we actually have a category that says office slash warehouse, minimum twenty-five percent office. That's like the total category. The downside of having an ODP that's this old is we don't have anybody on staff right now who wrote that ODP, who can help us understand what was intended, because there's actually a couple of conflicting clauses, I think, in Sheets One and Sheets Two. This ODP allows office, a hundred percent office. We think from a couple of statements that we found in the old staff reports that there is maybe a thought process behind limiting the office based on wanting to make sure there wasn't a parking issue, but we have parking ratios that sort of create self-limiting scenarios. So in an abundance of caution, we're processing this variance. You know, if they came in and just said, I want to use this a hundred percent for plumbing office, that's a permitted use. So it's a little bit awkward, but it's unique to this outline development plan in the way it was particularly worded on the two sheets.
And by us considering a variance, we address that issue?
Correct.
Correct. You have questions? Commissioner Simba?
Oh, let's see. Page three, I don't understand the build-to requirements on the front setbacks. Explain that build-to zone in lieu of front setback.
Sure. So in this zone district, which is nearby the commuter rail station, city code requires buildings to be built closer to the street, and that's to activate the street a little bit, so you have a pedestrian entrance close to the sidewalk. You've got the buildings that kind of make it feel more like an urban street, instead of having the first thing you see a big parking lot and then the building in the back. So it basically flips the requirement that's standard for buildings to be set really far back and have parking in the front, to have the parking in the side and rear, and push the building towards the street to kind of enhance the streetscape a little bit.
On this view that we have here, it's got your parking on the east side.
Correct.
And up to the street.
Right. So it still allows a little bit of parking, but the majority of the lot has to contain a building, and in this case, it does.
Okay.
And the majority of the parking is still behind the building.
All right. And then on page four, so this parking issue, I'm wondering, kind of to satisfy that need, how many employees are we talking about in this facility? Are they there five days a week? What about Saturday and Sunday? And are there trucks that are going to be parked in here since we're going to such more employees than it was in '03?
The applicant will be able to answer the specific employee number, but we do know that this project exceeds city code for industrial buildings, so it's providing more parking than is required by code and taking into account the office space. So that's already been factored in. They actually exceed it by, I think, two or three parking spaces.
All right, I'll ask the applicant. Are there other office space in this general vicinity, or are they all warehouse?
There's a mix of uses. Some of it's more industrial. If I go back to this slide, this is a office warehouse development, but at a much larger scale. Got Japanese auto here, which is an auto repair and office. Valley, one of the water districts offices are here. So it's definitely a variety of uses, kind of office and industrial.
And so the other office spaces are at that twenty-five percent level that you mentioned earlier?
They may not be. They have their own custom zoning document, so they're all written a little differently.
Oh. Let me see. And then, I didn't see any talk on the variance aspect, page six, that talks about cost of this. Are they paying a cost for this variance? That's my understanding, that's most variances, you pay a fee. I didn't see anything reflected in that. Is this something that the applicant is paying on?
Yes. So when anyone applies for a land use case, there's an application fee, and it kind of varies depending on that, what the application is for, but also the amount of land. So in this case, the variance fee is pretty nominal, but the specific development plan is based, it's a much more expensive fee that's based on the amount of time it takes to review. But they paid an application fee for this process.
An application fee just for the variance, but not a costly fee because they're going to be paying more on the SDP?
Right. I believe the variance fee is $200, and that's just a processing fee for staff time.
Okay. And is that what an individual would pay on a variance request? Is this a processing fee and no other fees beyond that?
Correct. Unless they get a building permit, and then, of course, with building permits, there's use tax and permit fees and stuff like that, but just to apply for the variance, it's $200 regardless.
So this is not like fee in lieu of park? It's just, okay.
No.
Just an application fee? Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kearns?
Seems strange that there's so much landscaping in front of the, or between the shop bays. That seems like it's going to get run over a lot. Probably think about removing that. Looks like some Sumax, some Russian sage. Commissioner Rome is the, actually the expert.
I guess the question, well, the question I would ask is, are there any proposed curbs? Or is it just cut-out asphalt?
I'm not sure, because this is actually, this portion of the property is on an adjacent property. It's just shown for context. I know within the development, there is curbing on the parking lot, and it looks like it does wrap all the way into that access easement.
So you're saying that the, so the, but the landscaping west of the property line, that's proposed by the applicant, correct?
It is, but it's not counting towards their overall total, which still exceeds the minimum requirement. It's just shown for context.
Okay. I understand. I think that's what I would.
Because right now, it's just dirt.
Yeah. If it's, if it's curb, if it's just, yeah, if it's just asphalt, it's definitely going to get run over, and we can ask the applicant that. It's just, it appears right now to be a thin, just a single thin line, not like a, two Any more questions? I have, I have a lot of questions for the applicant, but the one question I do have for staff is, I'm looking at the photometric plan, and first off, it appears to be missing a lot of line work, like the, you know, where are the roads? It's just missing a lot of line work. But I, I understand that the road is probably where, looking at the other sheets, is where the curb flares are, you know? There would be a road going east-west right there. And it looks like there's a lot of, I mean, first off, there's a lot of light spillage, obviously, north of the property line. You know, I can look at these numbers, it's 1.4, 1.5. So technically, it's spilling beyond the property. And then, and then again to the west, but the west, I think, is, my understanding is a lot of that is existing asphalt drive.
Correct. Yeah, it's all, it's all lit all the way down that alleyway.
Yeah, there's almost nothing to the, to the east, but what is the, what is the city's stance on, on this current plan, on the light spillage beyond the property?
Well, on the north side, Fifty-second Avenue is getting an upgrade, so we're going to have a bunch of lights on there anyway. That's, doesn't really matter to us, because we're already going to light it up. And then on the west side, it's existing lighting. There is, not on the east side, but on the south side, very minimal spillover, and that is actually also that industrial development right, right here. And that's probably already has existing lighting that may not be factored into this plan.
Okay. And it looks like from the schedule that they have, that is obviously a full cutoff downlight.
It is. We look at that on every new development.
Okay. I have no other questions for staff. Does anybody else have questions for staff? No? Thank you. Let's hear from the applicant, if you could state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Alice Hinkle, and I'm here tonight with my husband Scott and our son Jimmy. And we've lived in Wheat Ridge for twenty-five years. We live at 3420 Garland Street, and we, it is our plumbing company, SNS Plumbing Services. We started our plumbing company in 1993 with just a couple of plumbers and, you know, the dream of entrepreneurial life. Started our family the same day he quit his job and started our company, same day. So that was exciting start to what has been a long and successful business for us. We, we're really proud of our employee base and that we have built, some of our plumbers have been with us for fifteen, eighteen years, which is unheard of in our, you know, construction business to have most of our staff be longevity. So we are asking for the increase in office space percentage to house the size of our office team, and I'll, I'll tell you a little bit more about that. And what we want to build now is different than what we originally thought we were going to build back in the day. And, but this building will be meeting our current and future needs, as well as adding to the value and aesthetics of that neighborhood and that streetscape. So I'd like to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson? Commissioner Simba? Commissioner Larson?
Excuse me. Yes, first, I want to congratulate you for posting the video to Wheat Ridge Speaks. Excuse me, yes, first, I want to congratulate you for posting the video to Wheat Ridge Speaks.
Yeah.
You, I think, are the first one, and I think it came out, it played very well.
I've been here since then, too.
Learned a lot. Tell me about your existing location. Where do you guys work out of now?
Sure, we have, right now, we're in a rented space just up the street on 52nd in, I mean, at 5460 Ward Road. And there's that engineering building and then real estate building, and there's kind of one off to the back, and we have just a small office space there. Our, our office team is five people right now. So the three of us, as well as, we have two other people. Natalie works Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Holly works Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. And then we have our plumber base, we have 15 plumbers in the field. And we have what they call is a gray fleet, so it's non-owned autos. All of the trucks go home with everybody. They, they, you know, leave from their homes. They don't come into the office every day, other than Scott's truck would obviously be in there because he does plumbing in the field as well as office work. And, and so we have one other, so Scott's truck will probably just stay at our house. And then we have one truck that will be there, that's our delivery truck. So we basically have that office warehouse manager position that we don't have now. Will be added when we can have an office space for them. And that, so other than an occasional full office meeting, we usually are not able to do that very often just because we're busy and we don't want to have them in there. So we don't anticipate having a lot of vehicles, you know, always there or parked there.
And thank you. That was going to be my next question. Do you, you have your office people, and you have your plumbers. By the way, are they employees or contractors or?
They're all employees.
Employees, and they don't come and go on any regular schedule? They come in when they need to? Is that how it works?
Yes, if they come into, you know, maybe they need something from the office, or if they need to pick up t-shirts or whatever. Oh, well, I guess that, I changed that a little bit. So right now, we also currently have two storage units that are on Kipling and Colfax at that, what used to be Uncle Bob's. I forget if it's Life Storage or something now, whatever it is. And so that's where our materials are. Most of our materials are held at plumbing supply houses at Ferguson and Wind Supply. We order parts, they're delivered directly to job sites. But when you get there, that's, the delivery driver might have to go pick something up or pick up excess materials and bring them back to storage. So that warehouse space will be used for that, but our intention is not to have a bunch of capital, you know, sitting in the storage room. We are, we don't, you know, we're not going to change our business model. What we're doing works, which is, you know, keeping everything moving. It's not intended to be a large storage space, although it will be nice to have it spread out and organized.
So then the, that offsite storage you have down near Colfax, would you transfer all of that into this location?
Yes. Yeah, so I, I think on one of your pages, you have kind of an outline of what we think we're going to do inside. And that includes like long rows of storage shelving, you know, just those gorilla shelves. And, and we have a gas pipe machine and we have, we don't have a lot of equipment. We don't have any tractors, or we're not, we're not that kind of a plumber. We do commercial tenant finish plumbing. So we do, you know, sometimes new restaurants or new office buildings, but a lot of, the majority of our work is tenant finish going into the apartment, I mean, the big downtown buildings and redoing offices.
No, no big backhoes or trenching machines?
We rent those, we use, you know, Lakewood Rentals or another rental company, and they deliver it to the site and pick it up, so we don't have to do any of that.
It sounds like a very efficient business model.
It's.
All the questions I have, thank you.
Mr. Voss?
Hi, just what is the percentage of your office space versus warehouse that you're anticipating?
I think it's somewhere around 52%, I saw on one of the slides.
Oh, that's right. I remember reading that now. So 52% office space with just.
And I think that includes the, that little loft area in that.
And that's with five to six office employees?
So we'll probably add, so with the, that's what we currently have, five to six employees. We'll probably add one. Scott just, would be great if he could have another person helping him doing bidding. He's, he works in the field and does bidding and does a lot. So, you know, I look at hopefully getting a project manager or something like that to, to help. So that's one of the additional open office spaces. But we're not, you know, we've been in business a long time, what we're doing works. We have wanted this building for all of these years. We bought this land in 2001, and you asked about, you know, why has it taken so long? Part of it was, it took a year and a half to rezone it the first time from an agricultural to the overall development plan. And, you know, a lot of that was, I didn't know what I was doing. I didn't hire the right people. And then the economy, and then, and then we were busy, and we have been busy for a long time. And it just hasn't been a priority to, you know, do that and shift our focus. This takes a lot of work for, for me to, you know, do all of this and coordinate it. So that's kind of, you know, it's just been, life got in the way, but, but our intention has never changed to build a building. The original building also was 6,000 square foot, and it was supposed to be three small units so that we had, you know, two that we could rent out, and we were going to all cram into this one. And at that time, it was just me and, and I don't, we, we never got Scott in the office. We just did everything on the phone. And, you know, we just didn't anticipate growing to where we are, but we know now we don't want to grow much bigger. We just want to make it easier for us to continue to work through our workable years. So that's the, you know, that idea.
So it seems like most of this variance issue is more of what the previous paperwork said with the city as opposed to something she is asking for a variance of an existing.
I think, yeah, oh, sorry, can I answer? I think when it came up, you know, I was proposing 6,000 square feet with this little tiny office in the front, and, and so 20%, okay, whatever he wanted to put on the paper. That's what I think my ignorance at the time was, I didn't look at what that even meant. It suited what the building that we were going to build at the time. And I, there was, there was, I think there's questions at the time, but again, it was just kind of like, okay, just, yeah, let's, this is what I want to build. Are you going to let me build that yet? Okay. And then it didn't happen, luckily, because we'd probably have to scrape it and put something else up anyway. But, I mean, the building we're going to build now is, you know, I think usable for the market, you know, if we want to sell it in the future to any of the other permitted uses. We have a very marketable building that's going to be desirable, so.
Thank you.
But our intention is to keep it.
Issue currents?
No questions.
I have some questions. They're mostly going to be, I think right now, probably about the landscape sheet. So the, one is just a minor correction. Looks like the golden rain tree size, you're showing it as a six-foot. The city requires a two-inch caliper. That's something very minor.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you very well.
You have a golden, there's a golden rain tree on the landscape sheet. You're showing it as specifying as a six-foot height, the city requires two-inch caliper?
Oh, I, yeah, I don't know exactly, I mean, whatever we're putting on there, I think it's been looked at by staff, but.
That's just a minor correction. And then, and then it appears, you can see it on the aerial, there are quite a few existing trees, but I don't see anything in the, in the documents that says like, here's the existing trees and, and just a generality, I don't.
Those, those trees have all been removed.
Well, they have been removed.
They died one year. There was a big beautiful tree in the middle of the lot that wasn't going to survive any kind of development anyway, but it died and we removed that. There's three trees in the easement area along the west side. Three, two?
On the west side or east side?
Two. On the west side, there's a 10-foot easement that goes between our property and John Salison's property. And those will be removed.
Okay.
And, and that was part of the, oh, could I address what you asked about?
Yes.
How come there's so much landscape there?
Well, I didn't ask that question. Are you talking about the, on the west side? We were asking, yes, I don't know who was asking, there's a lot of.
By the garage bays.
Part of that is that, that the front part of it will just be, the building will be windows. So when you look at the side view, where a lot of those, the landscape is up at the front, there's no, we don't want anybody parking there. That area, you know, had a problem with parking before, and it's been resolved for the fire lane. And then the landscape in between the bay doors, those bay doors are there to back up, and like I said, they're going to be going and getting materials and and backing them up into, you know, unload them. But it's not, you know, they better not run over my trees.
Are they, do you know, are there curbs for those areas?
I don't believe there's curbs there.
Yeah. Yeah, the curbs kind of help protect people from backing over the plants.
Yeah. It looked like there was a curb on the one. I can't see it, but.
Yeah, probably typically I don't see, I don't see landscaping in between the bays. It's usually just all concrete. Maybe some striping, but.
I mean, it can be a stormwater detention feature, like a bio swale.
Could be like a rain garden, but you have to switch out some of the plants. And then the, the other question I had is on the east side. I see that there's existing overhead power poles. Are there also overhead power lines? Existing overhead power lines? Okay.
Yeah, they're in that, there's a utility easement that runs along the east side.
Okay, it looks like the proposed trees are probably going to be right underneath those existing lines. It might grow into that. Sometimes that can be a maintenance issue. I did have one concern over the, a lot of those trees are, look like they're fairly small. You know, they're, they're like maybe 25, 30 feet for the golden rain tree and the other ones. But the spruce tree, this is just a comment, I've seen in the past spruce trees, mature spruce trees, not the little ones, but mature ones when they get kind of big, that we get these high winds and the spruce trees tend to be kind of shallow, and that the mature height of the spruce tree is in close proximity to the overhead power lines. It'd probably be about that same elevation. It could, many years down the road, you might have an issue with that, and you may want to consider some other type of tree. The ornamentals are usually smaller trees. Would probably be a little more favorable, but something to consider. And then the, the other question I had was, you're showing proposed locations for the street trees. And it said, I think it has a, it says streetscape by city.
Yep.
And the one question I did have is, it looks like the, that one proposed tree is pretty much right on top of the, I think, proposed storm line, which I would not recommend, but.
Yeah, I think, so some of that stuff in the streetscape is just a placeholder. We have been working independently from this project on the comprehensive design for both sides of 52nd from Ward to Tabor, so.
So the city will take like this plan and pull in whatever the proposed.
No, we, none of the, the, everything that's shown in the right of way on this plan is just meant as a placeholder. It's all being designed and constructed by the city as part of the 2E funded project in the TOD area.
But they'll have access to the, in this case, the proposed sewer, any?
Yes, new development can release into the upgraded storm sewer that we're building, correct.
Okay. I think that's it. There is a, this is very, very minor. I don't know if I change it. It's just, it says something about, on the ornamental grasses, it says switchgrass or Indian grass. But the genus species is actually correct for the Indian grass. I'm not sure why they, why the landscape architect put switchgrass or Indian grass, because it's, if you just cross out switchgrass, you're good to go. That was the only questions I had. I think it, I think it looks pretty nice. I was looking at the, you know, like the garbage, you know, like if that would be the best place for the trash can. It looks like that'd be pretty easy access. Looks like that is, you know, has some nice aesthetics, how that, where it's screened and everything. I would imagine, is that location, was that, sometimes municipalities don't want them to be visible from the street. Was that location dictated by the staff, or is that more based on your needs that that's where you wanted it? Sometimes I've seen, you know, maybe it could have been on the, on the far west side, where it'd be hidden by the building, but maybe staff decided that, or, or you decided that that was the best location for it.
I don't, we don't have strict requirements. I mean, we don't want it to be at the street, but it's allowed to be where it is based on the functionality.
Yeah.
I think our consultant team, who's not represented here tonight, had some input into what that might look like best for the trash company.
I know it got moved several times in discussion with the city.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I, I just don't know what the, what, if the city, what their input was versus what you're, where you're taking out trash and.
Our input is usually based on, is related to the wall that would screen it, but not so much related to how it needs to function, so.
So you might, so staff might be more amenable to it if it shifted further to the west?
No, I mean, it's fine where it is. It's screened. It's got an enclosure that's taller than the dumpsters.
The screening, yeah, the screening looks nice.
Yep. If they wanted to shift it, that's not, that would be allowed. Like, they could make that call once they're building, if that's, well, it's shown this way in the SDP. That's the kind of minor edit that wouldn't affect the overall development.
Okay, are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you.
I will now open up the citizens forum. There are, there's nobody in the, in the audience, so I'll now close the citizens forum. At this time, I would entertain a motion.
I move to a.
What?
There's going to be two, two motions.
I'm just doing the variance one. I move to approve case number WA1905, a request for approval of a variance to the allowed percentage of office space on property zoned planned commercial development, PCD, located at 12060 West 52nd Avenue for the following reasons. One, the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Two, the applicant is proposing a substantial investment in the property that may not be possible without the variance. Three, the request would not be detrimental to public welfare. Four, the application is in substantial compliance with the applicable standards set forth in the Architectural and Site Design Manual. Five, the property in question would not yield a reasonable return in use, service, or income if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by regulations for the district in which it is located. Six, the variance request does not compromise the original vision for the property as described in the ODP and allowable uses.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Call for vote?
Motion carries six to zero.
Is there a motion for the specific development plan?
Ms. Kresner, I will make the following motion. I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-19-05, a request for approval of a specific development plan on property zoned planned commercial development, PCD located at 12060 West 52nd Avenue for the following reasons. One, the specific development plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of a planned development as stated in section 26-301 of the city code. Two, the.
Two, the specific development plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of the outlined development plan. Three, the proposed uses are consistent with those approved by the outlined development plan. Four, all responding agencies have indicated they can serve the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense. Five, the specific development plan is in substantial compliance with the applicable standards set forth in the outlined development plan and with the city's adopted codes and policies with the following conditions. One, prior to construction, a building permit shall be subject to review and approval by staff and shall be consistent with the representations depicted in the SDP.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Call for vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Look forward to your project. Okay, we will now move on to. Old business?
Technically old business that Wheat Ridge Speaks has now launched. So for those listening at home, you can now submit comments in advance of public hearings related to planning and development at WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. We also have business cards. Don't leave without getting some. Should somebody come up to you in a grocery store and want to talk to you about a development case that you can't discuss, you can now hand them this business card that has that website address on it. Make it quick and easy. I think that's my only old business. We will have a meeting on February 20th.
Okay. On the Wheat Ridge Speaks, again, it works very well, very smooth and intuitive. The, oh, the question was if, if the commissioner does not open the page, does not log on, is it registered whether you're looking at a specific case or just the fact that you logged on or?
So it registers that you read comments. When you log in, open the case and that comment appears on your screen. So you may not even notice it, but they're actually gray before you've read them and they're white once you have read them.
So if, and we've had this discussion earlier this evening, if you do not, as a commissioner, you do not open the page, you get notified that you haven't opened the page.
Yeah, the, so everyone gets a notification on the day comments close, should have. And then you also get a notification on the morning of the hearing if you haven't read your comments.
But no, no notice if you have?
Correct. It's smart, yeah.
Okay, so if I read correctly, it's posted on Speaks two weeks before the?
Two Fridays before.
Two Fridays before meeting. And then throughout the whole two weeks, you have to log on?
Nope, nope. If it was me, I would log on like the day before, the morning of. It won't take long. Whenever you're reading a packet, just make that a part of your routine. Yeah.
But the, those comments are from the citizens are only on there. They're not, it's not, there's not like a hard copy that?
We won't print a hard copy because the expectation is that decision makers are looking there. We will, we do export the hard copy, like for the case file, for the public record. Planning Commission public comments will be exported as a hard copy if something goes to city council. But we won't bring a hard copy to the meeting of the comments that you would have read in advance.
Can we print it? Or sell it?
Sure.
On the list of, skip.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't export it for you as PDF, so I don't know what that formatting would look like because it's the whole page, but.
Control P? Ken?
Okay.
Is there any new business?
Sure. Just want to make sure that it's something correctly. But I think I read that if an applicant wants to make a presentation, they have to make it on Wheat Ridge Speaks because they don't, they can't make it here?
Correct. They can still respond to comments. So the way that a proceeding would happen is that, you know, we make a presentation, applicant has a choice to make a presentation. You take public comment, staff can respond, applicant can respond. So if they choose not to make a presentation, it's got to be the same, both online and at the meeting, but they'd still have the opportunity to respond to comments.
What constitutes a presentation?
It'd be that any comment that they'd be providing before public comment. You mean online or in person?
What's a presentation if they can, if they can't do it here, say they haven't done it before?
Right.
What is a presentation? Is it, who can you communicate to?
So both of our applicants tonight made a presentation. Often it's either introducing themselves or their project or explaining their project. That was their presentation. They both posted those online in advance. You'll see, I'm sure eventually, if we haven't already, an applicant who just says, thanks, staff covered it. I don't have anything more to add. But then may, you may still have questions of them, which is fine. You can do that.
But if an applicant is required to read what's posted?
I'm not understanding.
If an applicant is required to read it?
Correct. If an applicant posts a presentation, they have to make it in person. So there's, it mimics it completely. If they don't give us a presentation in advance, we prohibit them from making a presentation in person. So you won't miss anything. Yeah.
What's it?
Yeah, we don't expect any decision maker to watch the videos. We don't expect you to read the staff reports. You'll still get your paper staff report as you did this time and you'll still get the presentations live. So we aren't trying to prolong your preparation by having you watch those videos. You don't need to. You'll, you'll see it twice if you do. You're not prohibited from that because it's the same that you'll get in person.
If you only want to know if the presentation's here, is it appropriate?
I guess. I mean, you can ask us anytime. You'd see a video clip. You'd, like as you're scrolling down to the public comments, you'll either see the thumbnail of a video or you won't. And that will be the cue of whether or not there's a presentation. Yeah. I mean, in the olden days, two weeks ago, we didn't know if there'd be an applicant presentation sometimes until we showed up at the hearing, so. Yeah. Thanks.
Is there any new business?
No.
Motion to adjourn? Call for vote.
Motion passed six to zero.